For one of the things I had the opportunity to do is to present some of this co-construction and co-designing work with reviewing one of the authors from the mentor tax. And one of the things that she uplifted to me is she said that I put time and care into making sure that the science in my comics are accurate. You made me feel seen. Thank you. So really thinking about the ways in which we are thinking with other intellectuals and scholars do their writing and do their work and capturing the ways in which we can transform science has been really an important piece of this work. And it's also has been true to us as we have been developing as learners and learning from and with students on how do we transform science and how do we create opportunities to think about science as being an expansive face to think about the world around us. I really want to thank you all for allowing us to share this report. We sought to illustrate the efficacy and value of this course, this curriculum, the instructional model, but also thinking about the ways in which we're actualizing equitable STEM learning pathways for ETHS students and thinking about how historically understudied students can create, can have this sustainable way to think about themselves and guide us in really continuing iterating this course. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to add one more thing. The pillars that you saw, transdisciplinary literacy, storytelling, science, and science identities are the questions and the questions underneath that are the questions that this team asks themselves after every lesson. So what really drew me to this class was not only the amazing idea, but also the ongoing care. And it's a lot. And it's greatly appreciated. And I've had a chance to sit in on a planning session and I've visited the classroom and it's pretty amazing work. So, thank you for sharing. And if the board has any questions, I'm sure this team is ready to answer.
Thank you. Thank you for that information. Thank you for the report as well. It was really very thorough reading it, reading through was really helpful. So, thank you. Questions? Mira?
I don't have a question. I just want you to know how brilliant this is and you are. You don't need me to tell you that, but I really feel compelled. And I was just thinking of the criticality that you've designed into the work and coaching and helping our kids to do that is beautiful and science possibility. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mira. Mira?
So, this is really exciting. And what I was wondering about is you talked about cohort one and cohort two. And if I missed the numbers, I'm sorry, but about how many students does that involve? And is there plans to expand this? Is this considered kind of like a pilot? And does it end up replacing biology with support moving down the road?
I can say, so, in a perfect world, yeah, I think so. But what we have to also realize is that we have, this team is, works very well and elevated this course to a level. And I think the next steps down the road would be like, how do we make it replicable with folks? Because it really takes a commitment beyond expertise. You have to be an expert in your content area. You have to be able to team, but you also have to be willing to interrogate what is happening daily. And that's externally intensive. But I do think, given the right tools and the right time, we could, you know, it'd be great if it could replace a biology with support. We'd like to scale that back so that that would be a freshman. The transdisciplinary notion is important because what happens here is you get your biology and your chemistry. So, you get that life science and your physical science by the end of sophomore year. And then junior and senior, you can take electives like every other student who starts science in freshman year. So, we have to keep that in mind, too.
Yeah. I think, thank you. To add on, we have currently serviced about approximately 70 students between cohort one and cohort two. So, we are now in the concluding year of cohort two. We don't have a cohort three currently running concurrently with cohort two ending in year two. But one of the things that we, when we originally proposed this course, was thinking about it as a model, right? For how do we service this group of students in particular? And these groups of students are typically within the reading enrichment course. So, creating opportunities for students who would not have had an expansive, kind of more developed generative science experience, creating an avenue and a lane for them to experience some more developed kind of science curriculum and instruction.
And thank you for all the intensive work it looks like you have to do on a daily basis.
Yeah, just quickly, this is brilliant. And when I think about those students that would benefit from this, I immediately started thinking about our middle schoolers. And, I mean, you talked about the lane and creating a pathway into this. And from what I was, you know, able to gather from the young lady that was speaking, I'm thinking about sooner the better, right? And how, when, and I know this, we're meeting with District 65 next week, I know that. But when we have the conversation around being creative and out of the box, this is what I'm thinking about when we're talking about our collaboration with District 65 and preparing those students to enter into high school, you know, fully ready to take on this work. But not only just to take on the classes, but to be empowered and to feel empowered and see themselves in this work. So, that's where my head went immediately. And I'm hoping that this is the type of conversation we're having with our other district.
Have you been able to have conversations with the district, with the other district?
Actually, in the winter of 2021, we actually had partnered with a reading specialist at King Arts. And our students had, this was actually before the official pilot, but it was informative for our thinking around our course proposal as we were developing our course proposal at the same time. We actually, our students had developed books that were conceptualizing science in ways that were accessible for younger readers as well. And it was also very much about them telling stories about science in their homes, right? As we were actually, this was during the pandemic. This was all remotely. Yes. So, we, the students had created these beautifully developed books that captured a science experience and a science conceptual idea that they had chosen from their homes, actually. And they did the experiments and the processes in their homes during the time. And we were there to support them in that process. And those books were actually sent over to the students at King Arts where they were able to experience that first science lesson. We have visualized some iterations or ideas around that. But thus far, this year has been really fruitful and we've had deeper relationships with Dr. Babus and Ms. Perkins, which has really been very supportive of our process. But that is definitely something that we would love to continue to think through. So, thank you so much for the question.
Yeah, thank you. Other questions? Liz, then Rachel.
I just want to reiterate, this is amazing. Thank you so much for the comprehensive report. I read the whole thing. I loved seeing the origin stories of the students. That was so great and so insightful. I learned so much from the report. So, I just wanted to say that this is, this is great. I love it. I was just wondering, I don't know if I missed it or not, but how do students access the course? Is it based off of MAPS scores? Is it like a recommendation then, or how does that work?
No, it's based off of MAPS scores. So, students who are, the design of the course technically is for students who are already enrolled and freshman enriched, which is very much scheduled based off of MAPS scores for eighth graders. And so, our course is meant to serve those students in particular.
Thank you.
Right. Rachel?
Well, I had two things. My question was how do people like access the class? But then my second one was just like wanting to say how much this seems like such a great course that I wish was accessible to like everyone because science literacy is so important. And I have experiences where in math classes and science classes, people just can't like articulate like the, their thought processes. And this year, I'm in a class where the half of the point of it is to be able to do that, but it's my first time doing it. And I didn't realize how difficult it was, but it's just my first kind of experience doing that. And I'm a senior and I feel like starting it so early has been, or would have been like so great because I think it's helped me be able to sort of speak out my thought processes and everything. And so, just wanted to say this class sounds really great and should be for everyone.
I agree. I agree that it is really so practical, so needed. And, and she's right, we could certainly expand this across the whole school. I know that's.
Well, well, well. No, I do think that there is beauty to expanding it. And I think one of the things that we've learned is that it does take a lot of work and it does take a level of not only reflection, but it also takes a level of manpower to really think about, you know, think with people. I think a key part of this course is co-designing and creating opportunities for folks. Like every summer, we host one or two think tanks at Northwestern with the lovely help of Dr. Perkins with a group of people just kind of thinking through, how did this year go? What went well? What things could we think about for next year? How do we, do we go back to our axiological principles and go back and re-ground? Are we reaching the true goals of this course? And I say this, I ought to say is that it does take a level of work that I think education really hasn't been designed for. And creating opportunities to expand this will require a paradigm shift because it really does, we have to really shift the ways in which we instructionally think about teaching as well as we have to spend a lot of time together. Like we've spent more time with her than my baby, you know? And, and her baby, you know? But I think that, I think that sustainability would be the first approach to thinking about this and really thinking about if it could be a large-scale thing as well as one of the things we really wrote the report for is to think about, how do we name the pedagogical move we are trying to make? And I hope that that came through because that's, that's a difficult task because it is something that has not existed and we don't have a model for. But we're also engaging with folks to really think about what that could be and what it should be and honoring the students and scholars that we're serving. So, yeah.
We want to underscore that this isn't co-teaching, it's co-designing. And it really requires an intentionality to understand the theoretical framework that Dr. Fasugi and her colleagues provided. And it requires that we are essentially teacher-learners as we try to amplify in our report as well. And so, that type of positionality where you're constantly learning as an educator while also trying to teach on the day-to-day, it is a pretty intense endeavor for both of us. And we have been grateful for the partners that have been supportive, especially this year. But that is truly something we do need to name. So, thank you for the question.
Thank you. Thank you for setting the groundwork for, for how this can be done. So, I hope, my hope is that others will learn from you and begin to emulate this even in other departments. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Our next item is the Centennial Innovation Update.
Great. Thank you. We're going to have Dr. Babus will remain at the table. We're going to have CFO Kendra Williams and our new Chief Advancement Officer Jeff Hammack to come and share even more exciting news here for the district. We have not added square footage in this school in 60 years. And we're the largest high school under one roof in the country with 1.3 million square feet of space. And I think what you're going to hear tonight is we're going to get even bigger. All right. So, who am I turning this over to first? Is it you, Kendra? All right, Kendra.
Good evening, Board. So, as Dr. Campbell teed up, we have a lot of big, bold plans as we're celebrating 100 years for just how we're going to be able to breathe more life into this building for our students. We have spaces that have gone many, many years without being updated, haven't added on to the building in quite a long time. And so, as we really reflect on the last 100 years and what we've been able to accomplish, start looking forward to another 100 years, we know that we want to do even more for our students. And so, that happens in one way through our capital plan. And so, rather than only doing the typical presentation for you all regarding our capital plan, we decided to get even more exciting and really talk through some of these pieces as it relates to upcoming renovations. This will be a multi-year project that we're going to be bringing forth. And so, we have Michael Doltre from Perkins &amp; Will, our architect firm. He's here to talk to us about what we've been doing, what we've accomplished over the last year and what we're going to be accomplishing in the near future. And then, of course, when you hear about these big, bold plans, I know that it's not just my brain that goes here. Well, how are we going to fund that? Right? And so, then also to my right here, Jeff Hammack, our Chief Advancement Officer with the ETHS Foundation is here to talk some, about some of those pieces as well. And then, of course, any puzzle that we put together here had always, always, always involves the students. And so, we have Dr. Pete Babus joining us to talk about the impact for our students and curriculum here at ETHS. So, I will turn it over to Mike.
Great. Thank you. It's great to be here. Very excited to continue our conversation around the arts innovation wing projects associated with centennial projects here at ETHS. So, it's great to be here tonight. My name is Michael Doltre. I'm a senior project architect with Perkins &amp; Will. We're going to be talking just a brief introduction about who we are and then we'll talk, update on work that has been done and work that is ongoing as well as just in, have a little bit more touch base on, from the foundation side as well. So, we're Perkins &amp; Will. Perkins &amp; Will is a, has a long history here at Evanston Township High School District, going all the way back to the original building, which was designed by the father of one of our founders. And so, we also, Perkins &amp; Will was involved in the major work in the 1960s in which we're also happy to be continuing that legacy as, you know, learning about how we were involved in it and really expanding that as well. So, you see here, some of our project team, there's a wide variety of people from our team that you'll see around the office as well. But just to give a brief introduction to those few individuals here. So, just one of the, one of the few projects that we've worked on, just our initial touch point with, with the school was the health sciences suite, a very, what we consider to be a very successful project that was completed in January of this year. This took place in what was a former CTE offices in the, the three-story building in A-Wing. This classroom really took a life from trying to mirror the clinical environment, the industry, providing an industry focus for health sciences strands, so multiple different strands of health sciences, including nursing education. So, you see, you know, a lot of flexibility built into the classroom, the, a lot of things that mirror the real-world environment for that in order to make that a really a, a strong adaptable learning environment for a multiple different health sciences approaches. So, you know, the design was really around trying to, again, introduce a flexible environment, but also, you know, have the furnishings and the equipment that are brought in that really make this into a really, a professional environment, something that mirrors the, what students will see in healthcare environments if they choose to continue on with any one of the strands that are offered within the courses. And the final product really came out really well here. You can see that there's a wide variety of opportunities for movement with the furnishings as well as the equipment within the space here so that, you know, the, the space can be rapidly reconfigured to allow for both direct instruction as well as small group as well as engagement with the, the equipment on the side here. You can see Chris is one of our, also, also our team members here who is posing as a model here, does a really good job with that. And as well as some of, we were able to leverage Chica, Chica from our office who has a daughter who just graduated from school here and some of her friends were able to come and help us out with photographs. So, great to see that as well. But you can see just how this space can be used and really has had a really good impact. And we see a long future for that with the programs that are able to be used within that class. Going on to Alumni Hall, recently opened project here that was a summer project. The intent for Alumni Hall was to really to take the, what was a mixed-use space, sort of a multi-use space, looking for somewhat of an identity, had some storage pieces to it as well and really make that into a front-facing, unique, technology-filled space that allows for a wide variety of uses that currently are, were not available to the school. So, you can see that in how the space was originally operating here. Behind the camera, you won't see that there was some additional storage in the room, but this is really just how it sat here. And, you know, the rooms had multiple different lives over its lifespan. You open up the ceiling and you can see a different layer of, of the age and the patina that, that has grown here. But we're happy to put our stamp on this, working with the school to really identify how that can be a future use here. So, conceptual rendering of how this could be used, the idea again, to really try to get the maximum utilization out of the space as much as possible, make it as flexible as possible and give opportunities for a different use here. Make, open up the space so it has more of a connection back to the hallway here so that it really has that, again, a real front-facing space, a place that, for community connection both within the school and within the broader Evanston community. Corridor, as it was originally designed, pathway down to the terrace here. Again, we wanted to make sure that there was some transparency that you could, so you could see that what was happening within that space and gain that excitement as well as provide opportunities for display of artifacts and articles from the history, the long history of the school here. So, as it was conceptualized here, you can see that the idea was to create that transparency, create the opportunities for display throughout here. So, the final completed project, I hope you've all had an opportunity to review the space. It turned out, you know, well better than we could have possibly expected here. So, the, you know, this is infused with the technology that allows you to adapt the space, allows you to use this in many different variety of ways, both from remote learning, hybrid learning spaces, small presentations, small performances, outside speakers, inside classes. You know, we've heard a lot of good, good things about what has been happening and what continues to happen throughout the space here. So, you know, you can see how the furniture allows for that space to be adaptively used, flexibly. It has a, you know, an ability to, to connect students in small group, individual, large group. Then there's a variety of different opportunities, again, to create that connection from the hallway into that space. Also built in here, the ability to create privacy when it's necessary. But the idea, again, that this is a space that's open, that's a democratic space, it really, really allows for a lot of that, that special use. So, we'll go into here, the, the project planning process that we've been working on and we've, we're continuing to work on projects here. We started really with looking at the overall master plan for the arts and innovation wing. We are in design with our first phase of work that's been broken down into a couple of different packages from there. And we are also continuing to progress with the majority of the work here, identifying how to move forward with any of that. So, this includes all of the, the arts and innovation wing, which would also, which includes visual arts, music, performing arts, career and technical education. So, that's engineering, geometry and construction and other allied courses there, family and consumer sciences, which includes culinary arts, fashion, design and business and consumer sciences throughout that wing. And so, what we've really been doing is we've, we've taken a look at, you know, kind of what was the history of the, of the building? And that goes a little bit fast, but this was, again, this is a drawing from back in the 1960s that was from, that was developed by Perkins &amp; Will here. But the idea was that the, the, really the, the four halls and then you had the, the arts and innovation wing off to the left on the page here, physical education facilities off to the right and shared core facilities in the center. And that's really kept true throughout the history here. So, we're, we're really interested to see how we can continue developing that as well. So, the areas in, in the colored side of the drawing here are parts of the, the wing that we're looking to really remodel, reposition. So, as any building does over time, you know, the, kind of the mission vision of some spaces gets changed in order to be convenient or in order for it to be necessary. So, what we did originally was take a look back and say, okay, how do we really reposition all the components within this area of the building to go for the current needs and the needs well into the future? How can we make it so that the, the building is reactive to the ever-changing, you know, pedagogy and ever-changing world? We can't predict the future, but we can create an environment that'll allow us to be flexible and react to that as we need to. And these areas have changed over time of how you're using them, how, you know, even from, from how they were originally conceived. There's been shifts in student interest, there's been shifts in, in, in industry focus on these areas. And so, you know, continual evolution of those spaces. And we want to make sure that the, the new plan here really reflects that as well. So, the, the design process has a multiple different phases here where we go through and we, we add additional information from the users. We always make sure that we're focused on, you know, how is the, how are the spaces going to affect teaching and learning here at Evanston Township High School? And we continually have a feedback mechanism for any one of the parts of the process, the project that we're working on. So, that we have distinct phases during that, which we'll review the process, make sure that it accurately reflects the needs of the school and then understand what the budget is, reconcile the design with the budget so that hopefully when we come to bid day here, we have no surprises in our, in the project. And we, we are currently in the first phase of work in the design development stage right now. So, we've gone through our pre-design programming, we've gone through a schematic design process, and we're currently working through our design development. And so, we're continuing to add detail and information and refining the design as we move on here. So, our communication decision process really, the Perkins &amp; Will Bully Andrews team, Bully and Andrews is the construction managing team for the project. We are working back and forth with a steering group composed of team members from the executive team, the, the school administration, as well as Cotter Consulting, who is the, the school's owner's representative. And then, there's been, there's both direct and indirect communication between the end users. That includes students, staff, faculty and other, other individuals who are using those spaces. So, we've had direct connections with them and then there's always communication depending on what information is necessary to do that. So, we want to make sure that anything that we're doing is reflecting the needs of those groups in what we're working on. So, the first project here that we're currently in design on is the, is work that will be anticipated to start in summer 2025. That includes improvements to the three-story building, the building of Wing A here that will look at replacing exterior windows, addressing some masonry needs on, on the exterior as well as the roof. That's a really clear focus on there so that as we go through future phases, we can look at the interior without having to work, worry about what may be happening with the exterior. We're also starting, we're also anticipating starting construction of a multi, of a year-long phase of work that would include the addition of a new studio theater. So, it. So it is a multi-purpose performing arts space that will replace the small theater eventually, outside of the main performing arts center. A new orchestra classroom, there's been a significant, you know, understanding that there is a continued growth within music education programs here that is outstripping the space that is available for it. So that really came out of the, the user group discussions as a significant priority in order to look at future projects that would happen within that wing. So these are the, some significant enabling projects for future work that will happen also within the footprint of the Arts and Innovation Wing. We also have a small addition here that you can see, it's called New Vestibule. It's an expansion of the hallway here, and that's a critical component to future work. It's not going to be realized on immediately what the impact of that is, but the future intent of this is to really take and straighten the corridor that comes through here instead of having the jogged corridor, both from a wayfinding standpoint as well as a, a safety and security standpoint. Making that straight corridor is much more, you know, effective than the way it moves and meanders through the space as it is right now. I only wish I knew the architect who did that. So the, but that, the intent of that, that new, new vestibule is again, to, to make sure we can do that in the future of extending that corridor, making it straight. And the reason to do it now is we get a better purchase on, on multiple projects if they're being built new than we would if we did it as an independent, small building addition at a future date. Future phases, the building really breaks itself down well into three major categories or three major areas that we can look at on when those will be done. So a phase, these are all to be determined. That's going to be based both on, you know, programmatic impact, what has the highest and best impact on teaching and learning within the facility, logical progression, what makes sense with other work that is being done or will be done. That's from a building systems side as well as a straight construction side. And then financial considerations, what is the, what best matches the finances that are available at the time for the project. And we take all, we, we work with the group here to identify all three of those basic pieces here to determine, you know, what's the next phase of work that's going to be done. And we like to see that happen in the January timeframe, so that we can have design that would be complete throughout the year, bid out at a comfortable date in the fall, and then the work would start the following summer. So we're, we're in the process of re, of, in, in a budget reconciliation process right now, in which we're taking a look at all of these phases and understanding, you know, what's the best way to fit those within a larger, larger-scale budget here? And then we'll start talking about what's the next phase of work to be done after the current phase of work goes out to bid later this year or early next year. So again, there's lots, lots of elements that come to that, including, I'll go through some of the draft renderings of some of the spaces here. These are conceptual imagery that, that just shows what are some approaches to these. You, they, I don't think you'll find spaces that exactly mirror this, but same concepts are going to be really brought in here. So when we look at culinary arts, we look at, you know, having a very flexible space. We have fixed equipment around the perimeter, the ability to move within groups within the space and reconfigure as necessary. Again, the, the whole idea that you'll see that, that keeps coming up here is, how do we make a space work hard with the amount of space that you have? So that the, that it can really reflect what's necessary for teaching and learning. Visual arts classrooms, again, the same thing, introducing flexibility, really reflecting the art that's being done within the space, adding the utilities that are necessary in order for these spaces to work, addressing the storage needs, both temporary storage for, for student belongings as well as student artwork that may happen within the space and materials. This shows just a draft image of what the building addition may look like. This is a, this right here shows what the studio theater would look like, could look like. We're still working out some of the details through that. The idea, when we look at the interior renderings here, is that we have some presence of this out onto the same area as the pre-function space for the main auditorium that has a, a, a good connection back to that and creates a good pre-function space for that, that studio theater. And then a theater that is flexible, it's able to be configured as being in the round or as necessary for whatever performance that may be used at the time. We're still exploring what the, what the viability of providing windows into the space are. We think it breaks down the exterior more than just a, a straight masonry face. And we also think that it provides the opportunity for this to be used as a true multi-function space. So if you're using this for coursework, you can open up the shades, you can open up the blinds, you can have that light that comes in there. If you're not, if you're using it for performances, you can shut that down. Or if you have the ability to integrate that into the performance, that just allows for that flexibility and that use of that space. So a future project will also include, this is the, the replacement area for the small theater that's outside the main auditorium. The idea here is to create a pre-function space that expands what is currently out in, in the front lobby of the, of the main auditorium and the correct, create a connection back to the visual arts wing here. So this space is able to be closed off and, or, or able to be opened up entirely, so that you can have gatherings here. You can have, you could have, you could have special events in this space. You know, you can, you can imagine that the artwork from the, from the visual arts classrooms can really spill out into this entire zone at this point as well. So I will hand that over.
Thank you. Good to be with you guys tonight. Thanks for allowing me to be here and introduce myself just a little bit. First and foremost, I'm a proud parent of three wild kids. I've got two alumni and a current senior here in the building. And I began my career in fundraising 26 years ago, mostly working in the university world, and most notably at Northwestern University, where I was the Director of Development for the School of Education and Social Policy, leading a $40 million campaign as part of the larger Northwestern comprehensive campaign a few years ago that they finished up. And I'd have to say that as, as I was getting in these conversations about this opportunity, this was not the job that I was looking for, actually. But as I started to peel back the layers, it was the job that I wanted. When I thought about the ability to invest in our community and all of our students, I thought, man, what a better way to be able to come and be a part of something is to help us kind of accomplish what Perkins and Will is going to do graphically and what Pete and the team are going to do for students. So I'm, I'm thrilled to be here in this new role as the Chief Advancement Officer for the district and, and working with the leadership team to ensure the ETHS, you know, delivers on the promise, right? Delivers on the promise for equity and excellence for all of our students, because that's why we're here. And that's what we're going to be raising funds for. So again, just to orient you guys, as the Chief Advancement Officer, Alumni Relations and the Foundation are being brought underneath my leadership. While I have a direct reporting relationship with Dr. Campbell here, I also report indirectly to the Foundation Board as its chief, as its new chief executive of the Foundation. And again, for you guys, I'm sure you're, but just to remind you, this is why we're here, is the Foundation, speaking on behalf of that part. And our mission is, the mission of the ETHS Foundation is to raise and distribute funds to the high school in order to complement, enhance, and enrich, beyond the means of conventional public funding, that's important, opportunities that further the educational mission of Evanston Township High School. You know, so since, since 2008, the Foundation has funded over 46 projects and given to the high school over $14 million in student support, an amazing accomplishment by the Foundation, unlike any other public high school in the area and frankly, in the country in a lot of ways. You saw two of the more recent projects that we've raised funds for. As Perkins Will alluded to, the Health Science Center and Alumni Hall, we helped raise the funds to make that a reality. As, as the need for improved physical space has grown and become more and more apparent to the administration, there's been a commitment from the leadership team and from the Foundation to say, how can we invest in these facilities and maintaining the reputation of the school and doing it without putting undue burden on Evanston residents and taxpayers? That is a critical piece of why we set out to do what, what we're doing. And so this is where we, the Foundation, the Foundation Board, our volunteers, and the Alumni Relations Team come in. You know, our plan is to raise the funds to support these aspirations. That's why we're here. Right? So as we've talked about already a number of times, you know, this is, this year we're celebrating our centennial of being here at Church and Dodge. And our history, although complicated, is made clear by the land acknowledgement here tonight. Our history is an important part of the story that we need to be telling as we fundraise, not only for this project, but really as we think about the next 100 years of what we're trying to do for students, not just today, but into the future. So we've been working, and are working with the Offer Group, which is a nonprofit consulting firm, to really assess our capabilities and infrastructure, so that we can, you know, how do we scale our efforts? That's the challenge that we're here for. How do we scale our efforts to support a project of this size? So again, I'm excited to be here, I'm excited to be a part of this team. I would not be here if I didn't think we could do it. And the goal here is really, how do we do this in a way that helps us achieve our aspirations while not putting that burden on Evanston taxpayers and residents and do it through philanthropy?
So they didn't give me a slide, but they let me talk, so watch out. I love coming after the architect, the CFO, and the Chief Advancement Officer. I just love that curricularly. Let me just tell you a story. You know, building these things is great. I mean, when we build, you know, in, in growing demand, there's growing demand for healthcare professionals in Evanston. We heard about it when we had a roundtable here with Tammy Duckworth several years ago. We built the new Health Science Classroom, and that's great. But what we've done with that classroom is even more important, right? We built courses aligned with not just local employment need, but also culminating in a CNA certificate that is a gateway to nursing and the medical field. And we did that in collaboration with Oakton Community College and IDPH. So this illustrates how, when you have a demand in the community and you can partner with local folks, you can actually create really amazing opportunities for students that utilize fantastic spaces. So this gets me excited, obviously. So our approach to curriculum development often involves collaboration with external partners. You saw that earlier tonight with our transdisciplinary science class, to ensure relevance and alignment with the rapidly changing world. We don't develop and innovate in isolation, we develop and innovate and collaboration outside of these walls. I'm thinking about our STEAM Design Thinking and Innovation course, where we also partnered with the McCormick School of Engineering at Northwestern to develop a, a course that's amazingly impressive, and I, I think some of our board members have actually seen it in action. But you know, some of the most innovative courses are grounded in student needs, right? Informed by external perspectives and implemented by our teachers, our extraordinarily talented entrepreneurial teachers. And these programs demonstrate our commitment to providing students with relevant, engaging, and effective learning experiences. So just as our physical spaces must be adaptable, thank you, architect over there, appreciated that, our courses need to do that too, to be relevant within our community, within the ever-evolving world we live in. So what do we do? We collaborate with external partners. Just earlier today, we did a future casting meeting with some folks. Those meetings are interesting, because everybody loves to predict the future and everybody loves to promote their industry. But that requires us to make decisions and be discerning. But that's also why our spaces need to be extraordinarily flexible. What is in and popular today, I mean, we're not putting smart boards in every room, right? That would be a huge mistake. We wouldn't want to do that. What we would want to do is build our, our, our rooms so that they're flexible for the next 50 to 75 years. And that's a major task, but it, but it's a task that curricularly we welcome, because then we're not confined by spaces that can only do X, Y, Z. We open it up to, to everything. So I want to thank you, and, and we're ready to take on the challenge and collaborate and, and populate those, those classrooms with innovative, transdisciplinary spaces and every other kind of learning you can think of. Thank you.
Before the board jumps in with questions, I want to say, I should say, that we are actively raising money. We have raised, we have gifts that are committed, gifts in progress, but we are in the quiet pace-setting phase of this campaign. You all have some idea what the money is, but we're not going to be talking about that tonight until it's an appropriate time to share what we've done. So I just wanted to give the board a heads up. We're in the quiet phase.
Thank you for that. Okay, questions? Gretchen.
You can shut me down if I, in light of your, the comment you just made, if, if I'm going, if I'm trying to push too far. I, you know, I can't not be excited by pictures of glossy spaces like this. And, but I have all kinds of questions about the money, and I, and I think we're going to get there. But let me just, you know, since we're here and we, and we have all of you sitting here, I, I have a few maybe general thoughts that, that could inform a discussion when we get a little deeper into the money. One thought that I have when I look at some of those spaces is, good lord, didn't we just redo that whole auditorium lobby area? I was on the school board when we did a bunch of work around that, that, around the current. And I, I can't always tell on these pictures where all that was and the, you know, the bird's eye view of the layout. I couldn't tell what any, I, I was not oriented very well there. So, you know, I feel like we've done some spaces that are pretty quickly getting redone yet again, and I'm, I'm not sure how much of that overlaps here, so I'm just making that observation. But on the money piece, I, I really need some help in understanding how, later in our, in our agenda tonight, we have a five-year capital improvement plan, and we're, we're supposed to approve that, I think, as part of our action. And there's all kinds of expenses on there. And, and, you know, over the course of five years, a piece of the expenses is the centennial, our contribution, multiple millions of our contribution to the centennial project. So it's hard not to talk about the money to some degree, because you're asking me to approve that tonight? And I'm not, you know, I don't, I don't want to be all negative, because this seems so exciting tonight. But I, I need to, I would like to know more about how those multiple millions over those years fits into what we're talking about here. I sometimes feel like we're just a little bit disjointed in, you know, we have the, we have the excitement over here, but, but I'm a board member accountable to my community, and there's a lot of talk about money in this community lately and how taxpayer dollars are getting spent. And everybody knows the schools take the largest chunk of those taxpayer dollars. So I, for one, whether it's right in this moment, whether it's at a later meeting, whether it's when we have a few minutes to talk about the capital improvement plan before we approve it, would like to hear just something, a little bit more on that, without putting pressure. And then one more thing. You know, we also have this 10-year audit on improvements that's conducted by the Regional Education Authority. And there is cost associated with issues identified with our building in all sorts of different areas to the tune of many, many more dollars. And I'm having a hard time just figuring out how all of this intersects. We also just approved the budget for the year. And I, I, I just, not to be a broken record here, I need some help tying together these pieces. And so, by the way, welcome, new head of the Foundation. But I, I actually thought you, when you were introduced, that that's, we were going to hear more, but, so thank you. I, I, I think it's important that Marcus, yeah, our superintendent clarified that, so.
So would you like us to start?
Yeah, so I'm sorry that that was a little bit rambling, but I, I was really trying to think hard about it over the course of the presentation here.
So just let me start by clarifying, we're not redoing.
We're not redoing spaces that are already redone. These are different spaces, and I'm going to let Kendra speak to the money. The conversation that we're having here is not a new one. This is definitely a conversation that the administration, we've agonized over, and we are not going to get out of our skis on this. So we're going to do what we can afford to do when we can afford to do it. But I'm going to let Kendra talk about that part. Go ahead, Kendra.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Gretchen, for bringing up the various items that we're going to be able to speak to. So I think the first thing was about the spaces, and you mentioned the space near the auditorium, but I just wanted to kind of give some more, some more context to the process that we have for the renovations in the arts and innovation wing. Like I said, the spaces that we're talking about are spaces that have not been touched in decades. And so, but there are spaces in the arts and innovation wing that have been renovated. So if you were thinking of, for example, the literacy lab, that's a space that's been renovated more recently. The ceramic studio also has been renovated within the last 10 years. So those spaces, when we had our architects come in and look through the scope of work and, you know, really discern what we wanted to touch, we made sure to say, this is not a space that we need to touch. You know what I mean? And so we made sure that we identified the spaces that we had already poured resources into so that we weren't just redoing everything and just throwing money at something that really was already good. So there are spaces in the arts and innovation wing that may not be touched for that reason, but by and large, that wing needs help. I mean, when we do tours, there are spaces that we know our alum from many years ago marvel over, and then there's some spaces that they say, it looks just like it did when I was here 50 years ago, right? And so we, like Marcus said, agonized over it and decided that this was something that we needed to tackle. And with that, see, this is what happens when you throw three things at once, but I'm trying to think what the next thing was. I'm pretty sure it was the money because that's, yeah, the money. Okay, great.
Yeah.
And so when we're talking about, so you brought up the CIP. When we're talking about the CIP, there are the uses for funds, which are laid out there, but also the sources. And you will see that there is a larger amount coming from the foundation than we've ever seen in the past because that is the plan, that we will be able to do this work by and large through philanthropic dollars. That doesn't mean that there is not some portion of the work that will be done by the capital, the capital fund that we have with the district, but the vast majority of the money for this project will be coming from the foundation. And some of the things that we will be putting money into are things that we would have been addressing anyway, such as roof restorations, windows, masonry. Those are the things that we have to address, whether this project happens or not. And also speaks to what you mentioned with our decennial health, life, safety survey. These are things that comes, that come up in the survey that we know we need to address. So we are putting those dollars into keeping this building in a good condition to the best of our ability. We know as is laid out, see now, everything's getting mixed in, but as laid out in the memo for the CIP, the depreciation that happens in this building forever and always surpasses the amount of money that we are able to get through our debt service fund to support what's needed, right? And so then, if we know that the building is depreciating, that when it comes to windows, tuck pointing, roofs, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, all of these things, how do you find the money to pour into the spaces that we know need to be renovated in order to support where we are right now with education for our students, right? How do you, how do you also make it pretty? We don't just want the building to stand. We want it to look good so that our kids can feel good about coming into a space. And I say it pretty, but it's more than that, right? It's about making sure that this building can support the needs of our students for the excellent education that we know we are here to provide. And so it takes money. We know that we don't want all of that to be on the backs of the public, which is why we are trying our best to get after all of these things through philanthropic dollars. And also why, if you can recall the slide that Michael brought up, there are so many points where we have to look at the budget. So we may have the schematic design phase, and then we say, where are we with the budget? What do we think, what do we think is going on here? Okay, we can move forward. Now we're, what's after schematic design, Michael? Design development. That's where we are now, design development. And then what do we do after design development? Where are we with the budget? And if where we're at with where the money is coming in does not match what needs to happen, then we have to make decisions based on what's the level of impact? What are we going to accomplish? How are we going to prioritize? All of those are the questions that are coming up based on where we are with the money. We're not trying to get out ahead of this and then, you know what I mean, put the cart before the horse. We know what we want to accomplish, but we also know that we have to be responsive to budgetary restrictions. And so that is the plan all through this project. And that's also why, thankfully, it's phased out in the way that it is so that we can have checkpoints. We know what we're going to be able to accomplish next summer, but if we have to pivot for the summer after that, then we'll pivot accordingly.
Say it one more time, Kendra. We know what we're doing next summer.
We know what we're doing next summer. And also, what I want to make sure that is clear is that while we forecast out in this five-year plan, right, the five-year plan looks at what we accomplished this previous summer, what we plan to accomplish next summer, and then an additional three. But the board is only approving what is happening next summer. The board is approving this year, not all of the years that are laid out because we know that that can change.
Yeah, that's going to need to be tweaked.
Right? And so that's why we lay out what we want to accomplish, but also recognize that if we don't reach the funding goals, then that could change. Next summer's what's sure. That's why that's the year that's not in the negative.
So I appreciate you for clearly laying that out, and it's, I mean, it's 100% solid. I think as a person speaking, speaking as a person who's also in the capital campaign in the quiet phase, I will say, it's quiet internally, but everybody in the community knows that you're doing this, right? So I think because it's quiet in terms of trying to get everything in order, we've been very public. And because we've been very public, it may help to enhance the knowledge of this board, what quiet phase looks like, because each campaign has a different, like, way of being quiet, but you're raising money in the quiet phase. And I think that is important so that people understand that we're raising money to do this work. And the things that we have to do, HVAC, systems, chill, all that, we have to do that every year. I mean, these are things we're looking at every year, but that is not what we're raising money to do wholeheartedly. The centennial has been broadcasted as this big, you know, thing in Evanston, only because I'm in a capital phase too, so I know who my competitors are. So it is, I mean, so we do have to talk about this, and we have to know, like, where we're at with our pledges, with the money that we have so far, because if we're also telling the story that we've also done some work, right, which you just highlighted, then yes, there's a question. Financially, what does that look like? I mean, people are not going to just look at the work and not want to know that that has been covered through some of the donations that we've had. So as much as when we're doing these campaigns, we try and we understand what quiet phase means to us, publicly, it doesn't translate the same, especially if you're not in this business of doing a campaign. We only know what we see. We see the community coming together. We see the branding. We see the hats. We see all that, and that doesn't necessarily mean quiet to other folks, right? So I think there's, and this is where I will agree with Gretchen, that there is an expectation that we dive deeper into what the phases look like for us. So if we get, you know, so if people in the community are like, oh, you all are doing this, and I heard this, because that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting now, I didn't know we were quiet, right? I thought we were out there because that's how it feels. So we just have to clearly define that and communicate that so people understand that this is going to take a minute, or this is, this is what we're doing, and this is where we're at. But this is exciting. I mean, my goodness, the building has been here forever. And yes, there are parts of the building that look the same, like day one. And so, you know, we pride ourselves in being this wonderful facility that offers wonderful opportunities outside of what happens in the classroom, but what happens in this building to our students. And, you know, people are, and families are drawn to us because of that. So we absolutely have to create an environment that is appealing to students wanting to learn in it. We cannot continue to think that we can operate as we do or look like we have and it not have a direct impact or effect in how our students learn. So it's exciting, but I absolutely want to know what phase we're in and what the phase looks like so I can communicate that as well.
Great question. Thank you for asking for Claire. You know, this is the fun game of fundraising. You know, it's kind of like double dutch. You're trying to figure out when to get in, and I don't know about you, but I'm always getting hit in the face when I try to get in there, you know? And so in terms of how that looks differently, or how we look at it, you know, we're in the quiet kind of advancement pace-setting phase. And what that means is we're going to some of our closest friends and partners, kind of on the down-low. I mean, like, we are trying to be as quiet as we can to go, where's the interest and where's the potential investment from who we think are going to be our biggest partners in this? And so we're in that phase right now. Again, there had been some work done for, over the last year plus, as we engaged the Alford Group, starting, I think, at the end of '22 preceding me, obviously. We spent most of '23 doing an assessment phase and helping us to kind of map out what might be possible, that said, we think you can do this. We think it's there. It's not going to, it's going to take execution. It's going to take some scaling, but the possibility is there. There is tons of untapped, and so I want to say this to you, Monique, this is not just about taking all of the money out of Evanston. I think there's enough money to go around.
Oh, I know that.
You know, but just, I'm with you on that. You know, I'm a five-time, five days a week at the Y, getting my workout on. So I want to see the Y be successful as well. And this is not just about taking money out of Evanston. It's untapped markets of, we've got almost 70,000 alum across the globe that we have not engaged. And so for us, the question is, and that's why part of the strategy was we need to better align alumni relations and foundation, because it's not just, you know, we are, this is a scaling challenge too. You know, we talked about going 14 million over the last 16 years to, you know, maybe three and a half times that over the next five-ish. So the phase we're in is we're talking to our closest partners, and because CFOs count money different than advancement officers, I can't really tell you what that is today because, you know, Kendra and I would arm wrestle over what's the number we're at, you know? But what I can say is I think we will likely have some good news between now and the end of the year. So our hope and our goal is to be, in terms of the phases, and I have a beautiful chart that I could have thrown in there, but we were trying not to be too transparent, not to you guys. So I'll just tell you, right? So we're hoping that by May, we might be at about 50% in terms of commitments of where we're at. We'll have a better idea of where we're at come the end of this year, and I'm sure we'll come back and do this dance again and have some better information for you guys, but it's absolutely the right questions, and I fully appreciate them and welcome them. But I'm also cautious. I don't like to jinx gifts as we're in negotiation, you know, and we're close in some spaces. And so, you know, as we have information, we will be sharing that out appropriately with you guys.
Well, can I ask? No, and I, yes, I appreciate all that. There is plenty in Evanston to go around. At what point do you go public?
So it depends on what you mean by public, right? So sometime, and this is what, right? It depends on...
Since this is now the loudest quiet phase we could have ever had.
So here's what I would say, is in May, say we hit our number of 50%, that's when our activity is going to start. You'll start to hear chatter in the community, and we'll start to activate. But again, from a public versus, in some sense, I still think of that as primarily an internal conversation because it's really going to be us primarily communicating with our alumni, with our foundation partners, and really doing very tactical work because we're still operating at those higher seven-figure and high six-figure gifts. To me, that's still not really public. Public will come in the last year of this campaign, six months to a year, when we're like, all right, now let's talk to the community because we want everybody to be a part of it. So, so again, you will see our activity become, we're engaging with a marketing firm to help us build out some of our materials and our narrative and how we're bringing, you know, buildings and connecting that with curriculum, and what's the story we're going to tell about the transformation and the opportunity we're going to bring to students. We're engaging with a marketing firm right now to help us put those elements in. Come May, hopefully, we'll hit our target, and then we'll start to activate. But again, I would say, I wouldn't call that public per se because it's really still more of our internal friends kind of conversation, just a little bit louder with some branding and a name on it. But really, when I think public, it will be more of that last year when we're like 90% of the way there, that we will then really start to activate in the community and celebrate in that way. Will it be a secret by then? Probably not. Probably not. But executionally, that's what it looks like.
Yeah, we'll know more. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's really helpful. Thank you.
You don't have anything about all of this?
Well, I don't have a question. I have a, I mean, so as a parent of children who are here, or child and multiple kids who've been here, that phase of the campaign, and I know nothing about these. I'm fascinated by the nomenclature use. So the louder part, I think will be essential to highlight the aspects of what we're obviously doing for our kids. The, you know, it always blows my mind that we have these antiquated spaces for our future and that we actually get away with it, especially when we have such a wealthy community. I think, is it like, is it hazing? Why? Why do we do that to our kids? Send them into spaces that are not as well-equipped as their own home sometimes. Obviously, there are other situations in which our spaces are different and providing other opportunities. And so I am of that mind of like, of course, we would take any amount of money trying to increase whatever sources we can to really take care of our kids in the best way possible. And so what you've shown us, I think, is incredible, and I can't wait to see more. And I feel like when we think about why we haven't been able to deal with some of the, what we call often equity gaps, we probably are looking at some of these spaces to help us create more opportunity and close some of those gaps. And so when we start making those connections, I think, I can't wait. So thank you.
I also don't really have a question, but more comments. I think that we're, this is why we're so fortunate to have a foundation. I think that, as highlighted, we have a huge building, and we have all this depreciation and so much to do. And I think that everyone here, led by Kendra, works really, really hard to use our taxpayer money to do the things we have to do, those practical tuck pointing, HVAC, roof kind of thing. Those practical tuck-pointing, HVAC, roof, kind of thing. And this is an incredible opportunity to have the foundation really provide, um, philanthropic funding to really move us forward. And I think, just like we talk about the resources of curriculum and our people resources and our teachers, et cetera, the space and the equipment, I mean, our resources too, that I think are really important for our students to have. And to have us, um, really, when we talk about how we really want to make education in this building relevant to our students, and really help them prepare for their futures, I think this is, and particularly in the area of arts and innovation, this is a really amazing opportunity. So, that's all I wanted to say.
And I'll just add that, uh, in nineteen twenty-one, this district set out to do something pretty incredible, right? To move from Elmwood over here, this location, and provide and, and build a facility that was second to none. They were competing with boarding schools at the time, which is, you know, they wanted this, this, this edifice to be a monument to education. So, one hundred years ago, they set out to do that. And we are standing on that tradition today. And I think we owe it upon ourselves, right? To do, to once again, do something bold that lays the foundation for the next one hundred years. And I know we have the team to do it, we have the talent to do it, we have the community to do it, we have the commitment to do it, and I'm very excited about it. So, thank you all for this. Just moving ahead.
I do have one more question, Pat.
Not a question, just a statement, and then this was the one I wanted to say. How intentional will we be in making sure we hire subcontractors that are local and of color to be a part of this project?
Yeah, thank you so much, Monique. So that is actually something that we have been talking about. Like, so even when we did the interview process for our construction management company, who, they are the ones that help us to source out our subcontractors, we spoke to them about this, our architects as well, and we'll, we continue to have those discussions to make sure that that is, um, thought of during the bid process.
Can I ask a related question, then?
Yes.
Is there anybody on the Perkins and Mill team who's got an Evanston connection? Apologies if you, you might be one of those people, but-
Um, not myself. Uh, I know we have, uh, several, uh, members within the, uh, within the firm, who, who are either members of the community here, or, um, or have history within the community here. The team, the team is a, is a broad and, and diverse one in our internal team. Uh, I don't know that they have specific connections, but we, we really wanted to make sure that we were, um, representative of the, uh, expertise that was necessary for the project, uh, within our office here. But we cer- we certainly have a vested interest-
Totally, I get that. I was just kind of hoping you'd have an ETHS grad, an ETHS parent, and ETH, you know?
Yeah.
What I'm getting at.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, I think we will get there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, team. Okay, so we're moving along. We have our data quarterly update.
Yes, uh, our data quarterly update. So this is the first quarterly update since the launch of our new data, district data dashboard. And so we have a few administrators, Dr. Mia Lovizo, our Associate Principal for Student Services, Dr. Keith Robinson, our Associate Principal for Ed Services, and Dr. Carrie Levy, our Director for Research and Assessment, all joining us tonight to kind of talk about where we are with this first update. Uh, I'm gonna leave the technical things to Carrie about setting a baseline, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, but Dr. Robinson and Dr. Lovizo are here to answer any questions, um, that you might have about what's currently there. And, uh, we'll get into interventions and things like that in the, in the subsequent meetings. But, Dr. Levy, why don't you take it away tonight?
Alright, Dr. Beavis is gonna drive while I'm over here. So, um, the Bachelor Data Bachelor, and Dr. Beavis and David Chan presented sort of our, kind of the rollout and our initial, um, layout of it. So before I start talking about, excuse me, this year's data, just some layout and design. So, you'll see in the middle, right, School Year 2023. That's the first thing you saw. That was from, this is really our report card data from a couple of years ago. It was what we were starting with to figure out how to do this. It is, uh, our data. ETHS data is navy blue, the state data for comparison is gray. And when I come back to you in November with our year-end review and the report card, I'll, we'll have a School Year 2024. It's gonna be a very similar format, and that's because this is now historical data. The minute we do it, it's all old, it's last year. So now, and then our graduation rates, we'll have those, too. If I transition to this year, this year, in every quarter that we update it, it's now gonna be in color, it's, it's our present students, it's current. And so that's sort of the, the visual for why we're gonna have the old historical data, sort of in that navy blue and gray with the state. But then, as we come to you every quarter with quarterly data and in these areas, it'll be, um, more visually representative. So, go back up to the top, pretty please. Okay, so, it's in four, um, can you go back to home? Okay, there's four tabs. There's, we have academic supports, we're gonna have attendance, discipline, and the student services and special ed. Okay, Pete, now you can go to academic supports. Okay, so this is, uh, the way we have this organized is we're looking at number of students who are accessing currently in our first quarter are different academic supports, academic study center, homework center, Lit Lab, and Wildkid Academy. And then, as we go down, we'll have academic studies center, homework center, and Wildkid Academy disaggregated by student group and grade. Lit Lab is too small to disaggregate, but we're, um, looking at, uh, by student group and grade. We are still working out some of the little kinks in formatting as we get this up and running live. But we're almost there. So I just wanna point out, this is new. This, this is going to be different. But as we look at by demographics, we are, the bars are where we have data for students, student groups that are twenty or more. But we have named all of our student population. So we have African-American, black, we have American Indian or Alaska Native, Asian, Hispanic, Latinx, Middle Eastern or North African, Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, students who identify as two of our races, and students who identify as white. We're gonna name all of them, but we're only gonna be able to provide data for students where we have, uh, twenty or more. Otherwise, we're trying not to, it's a, uh, we never wanna do that to make students possibly identifiable. But that's, um, that's new, and that's gonna, uh, different for us. But we wanna make sure-
Carrie, you wanna talk just briefly about why you're choosing to name them?
Yes. We had, um, we had a really great, uh, professional development today. We had Dr. Megan Bing from Northwestern and some of her colleagues. And one of the things that we learned, and one of the takeaways, is as we think about all of our students, our student populations, is making sure they're known, they're seen, and not, uh, historically, when we present data and we only do the groups, we have enough, it just doesn't acknowledge all of our groups. So we wanna acknowledge that they're there, that they're seen, that we see our American Indian or Alaska Native students, even though we don't have a proper sample size to report on them, but we wanna make sure that they're named. Anything else? Okay. And so we're probably gonna, that's something that knew that we're gonna be doing going forward. And grade was there, but now it's not. But there is a wheel right next to it. I don't know, Pete, maybe refresh? So, okay, yes, there it is. Okay, so, and we have grade, and we have our, um, this one is by grade, the others will be by class of. As we, um, work through some of our data that we have is by grade. Um, most of it is by class of. So this will be the, um, percent of students. So for example, students accessing the Academic Studies Center, there were nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven unique students. And twenty-eight percent were in grade ten. Ten percent were in, twenty-five percent were in grade eleven, which is in yellow. And then our, uh, seniors, grade twelve, represented thirty-six percent of those nine-hundred-and-thirty-seven. So that's how we look at that. And then below that, we have homework center. And one of the things we're working on, so there's a little, um, side scroll piece. We're working on getting this formatted so it all fits, so you don't have to scroll up and down. That's one of our kinks, but, so homework center, and then the bottom one was Wildkid Academy. The same, disaggregated by student group, students with an IEP, students who are free reduced-price lunch, and our emergent multilinguals also.
For what it's worth, I really like it when you put the grade rather than graduation year. Because with graduation year, I have to do math in my head to subtract and get the right grade. I just, I, I, I mean, I don't know, is that, is that a thing for people? I mean, I know probably within the school, you, am I, mirrors with me on this?
So actually, um, one thing I, I will say, so, um, I did do it so that the colors are the same, right? So class, the grade nine and class of twenty-twenty-eight, right now, they're all, they'll always be teal. The grade twen- ten, currently class of twenty-twenty-seven, right? Have to do the math, too, are, are green, and as we go around. The only, the nuance with that, right, is students could be, uh, class of twenty-twenty-seven, but because they may not have enough credits, it could be the grade before. So class of, class of is more representative. And then, it said that, like, the nuances in that, right?
I'll suck it up if I have to.
I'm sorry.
This is kind of surprising, coming from the woman who is asking about all the numbers and the fundraising to pay for our-
The colors, I think the colors are very helpful. Yeah.
There are colors around the building. That's our palette, so. I love it. I love using, um, doing our visuals of this. Okay, Pete, let's go to the next one, which is attendance. Thank you. Uh, so this is first quarter. Um, and honestly, it's about a week and a half shy of the end of the first quarter so we have time to do this. But we have students with, um, five or more absences, and that is excused or unexcused, all absences in the first quarter. So, the blue is represents, right, first quarter. Eighty-nine percent of our students had less than five absences, and eleven percent had five or more. And this is important, as we do, this one will be cumulative over the course of the year. So that by the time we get to the end of the year, we'll really have a better picture of where we are. This is a, kind of a proxy for chronic absenteeism, right? So by the end of the year, we'll have an idea of where we are with attendance, chronic absenteeism. We shouldn't have any surprises when we get to the report card next year, because we will have been looking at this in this way all year long. The one next to it is percent of students with two or more unexcused. So again, we're gonna have that cumulative as we go on throughout the year. This is only unexcused. Unexcused is a proxy for chronic truant. Um, so we can see that ninety-three percent of our students have less than two, and we have, uh, seven percent of our students have two or more un- unexcused absences. And we will look, as we, uh, look on this, at this in cumulative over the course of the year. Another one, so we're hoping not to, we'll know where we are by the end of the year, ideally, where we are with, um, chronic absentee and chronic tourism, and how to work through that, um, proactively throughout the year. Both of those are also disaggregated by student group, and by, these are by class of, Gretchen. These are by class of.
I noticed.
Which is more representative of how our, uh, uh, data is reported. Okay.
Also, a big thank you for doing percentages here, and not just the raw number. It's always been a thing with me, and it's, it's noticed and appreciated.
Thanks. Yeah, so, so, um, that is, um, will you go down a little bit? Is there anything else a hell on that? No, so, okay, so, um, start right there. So, right, for right now, right, two-hundred-and-forty-eight students, we're talking about, that's seven percent, is two-hundred-and-forty-eight students with two or more unexcused absences. And so, for example, the class of twenty-twenty-eight, the freshman, that's thirty-seven of those two-hundred-and-forty-eight students are grade nine or freshmen. Okay, and then our third tab is discipline. And so with discipline, we have where we are, and this will, um, likely be cumulative. But, um, in the beginning of this first quarter, the percent of students with any discipline incident, so we have two-hundred-and-thirty stu- thirty-seven students with any discipline incident. Seven percent of our students, so ninety-three percent of our students have no discipline incidents. And then, if you go down, thank you. Then we look at, um, our breakdown, so the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, how they are, um, by our student groups, by, uh, class of, by grade, by students with an IEP, free reduced lunch, emergent multilingual. And then, is there anything down? I think there's more, Pete. Okay. And then, when we look at our students, those two-hundred-and-thirty-seven, it's, you know, there's multiple actions with incident. So of those actions, how are they distributed? What are the types of actions? So, if we go to the teal, um, that's our percent of the actions. Four percent were inside suspensions, three percent were outside suspensions, and the green and the yellow, four percent were alternative susp- suspensions, and then, and another six percent were restorative practices. And then other af- actions, which I have listed out below, it's like conference with dean, and parent, and social worker, detention, social probation. That's the bulk of the remaining eighty-three percent of the actions.
Could I ask a question about that?
Totally.
That seems to be a, an enormous part of the types of discipline actions. And kind of like, uh, when we used to look at, um, how we code the disciplinary infractions, and we had that category that was included, you know, all the things that we couldn't otherwise define, but that clearly annoyed, uh, the deans, you know?
It was defiance of authority.
Yeah, it was all the D's. It was defiance of authority, and, you know, you know the things I'm talking about, right? And it was this huge, and I feel like I'm looking kind of at the same thing here, but on the flip side, in, in the terms of how we handle the discipline. And I find it extraordinarily unhelpful. But I'm not sure how hard it is to break out that other stuff. I just think, I think by, the very act of creating this dashboard has alerted us to this. And we now notice, for example, that restorative practices is only six percent of this. But my question immediately was, I wonder if some of this other actions actually is restorative? Like, these conferences, possibly restorative, but I don't know. So, I think this is gonna be incredibly useful. I'm not saying that I am able to interpret it now. And I appreciate that today's report on this is gonna be a little bit of an orientation, and a little bit of, you know, this is what we're thinking about. And I really appreciate this kind of iterative process that you're going through, and you're sharing with us here, and, um, it, it feels like, you know, we're working on the same page. But anyway, that, that in particular jumped out at me, and maybe we could flag it for future work.
Yeah, we can definitely look at that. I mean, I want this to be helpful, so we can look in a way to make this more informative. Go for it.
Hello, good evening. I can speak to a little bit of that. I would agree with you that most of the conversations in nature are restorative. All the consequences, this specifically one, are reductions to suspension. So those students who may have had an extended amount of days outside or inside through a restorative practice have been reduced, uh, which is pretty good, pretty significant.
But it might be still a little difficult, um, and we'll just have to work at this. How do we tease out all of the things that the deans are doing, and that other eighty-three percent?
Yeah, we have it. Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's a, that's a bigger report.
Right, right, right.
So this is, this is a, a sample.
Right.
A, a snapshot, yeah, absolutely.
It is, and we can still look at it and see if we can tease it out in this snapshot.
Exactly. Because we talked about it, because Pete, if you scroll down, it's a little blurb at the bottom there. Carrie, I think you added this after our conversation, and we probably wanna tease it out a little bit more.
Yeah. Okay, last tab, I believe. Student services and special education services. So, we have types of student service referrals, so universal referrals- So we have types of student service referrals, so universal referrals. So in first quarter, there were two hundred and seventy-four universal referrals for supporting students. And within those, we've teased out a few of them, so social work referrals, referrals to AIT and Five-O plan referrals. And the definition of universal referrals is kind of includes all of that, plus tier-two mental health groups and safe pass and SST problem solving. So there's an extensive definition of that. And then for special ed services, this one is looking at, so all students in special ed are actively, just go up a little bit more, please, thank you, accessing special ed interventions, but specifically working with their IEP team on problem solving around risk factors, and looking at problem solving and developing interventions in alignment with the student's IEP, whether or not they're addressing attendance, academic, or some combination. That's what this is reporting on, looking at. So we have of the students with an IEP, right now, twelve percent, they're doing problem solving in some more specific targeted interventions on top of their special ed interventions that they're receiving. And so that's a layout for the data dashboard. So now we're just open for questions. Pete, is there anything else you mind?
No, I would just say that you can say that there are dropdowns here and this is here, and I can show you that to access it.
Okay, so yes, you can go for the home, and there are dropdowns to those tabs. So it's found under research, under departments, research, and where our board reports, our year review lives, is just in there. It's directly linked in there, so you can just click on data dashboard and it takes you straight to this.
And we will get this quarterly, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we figured out how to do this in a way that you get this quarterly, that we have data that's current and present, but this is also sustainable for us to do.
Right.
So.
And then I see that if we wanted to, we could get these other reports, because they're all in here too.
Yes, yes, the board reports are in the board packets, but then in here, I have our, our annual year review reports, and opening a school is always added there, yes.
So, so I do have another question. So one of the things that I think is so hard for us to do is when we look at the, in, in twenty twenty-three, we can pull up the SAT, the science assessment, et cetera, the, the testing data. What we, what we really, and I guess we get that by subgroup. What we can never really do is somehow overlay that information with the academic support, attendance, disciplines, and student services data that we have in those other tabs. It seems to me that the single biggest problem with our management of data, and correct me if I'm just, if there's places where, where this could be accessed. But it seems to me the point in looking at academic supports, attendance, discipline, and student services, we obviously want to see the numbers go in the right direction to get better. You know, more students getting support, less absences from school, et cetera, et cetera. But we also want to understand how that's connected with achievement. And there's never a place where you really see the overlay between the achievement and this other stuff. Isn't that really kind of the crux of the problem and?
I can do it.
Oh, there you are, Pete, hello.
So, hi, so I, so I'm not clicking anymore. I would say that that's a, that's a research question that wouldn't be in the data we would have available, we would have to do that. But I think we could look at the correlation between, I mean, we know this because we did work with NIRA early on that said,
We know that it's correlated.
If a student gets a suspension in the first, like, X number of days or first quarter, then their chances of graduating, their GPA goes down. So we do know, because we have student ID information, right? We could link all of that together, but what we would need, though, and we could work this out, is a really discreet question to pursue, to be able to answer with that data. Because otherwise, it'll go like this, and we want it to go like this, because we want it to be helpful and informative. But that is absolutely something we could, we could do, sorry, Carrie.
Well, it's just, it's just something to consider as, as we're moving forward with this dashboard.
My wheels are already turning.
Is, we're not just doing this as a matter of curiosity. I mean, we're doing it because we want to improve our, our students' lives and success, both while they're here in the building and upon their graduation. And, and that's why we look at this stuff. We're not, you know, it's not just, can we come up with a good chart, you know, and so.
I, I love this, because we're, we're having the conversation we should be having about this. I think it's putting it out publicly like this, doing it quarterly, doing this, allows the, the board and, and us to have a more sophisticated conversation, where we could then say, okay, that's a great question, let's figure that out, and let's bring that forward to the board. So I think this conversation right here, just first quarter, that question really gets us, I mean, you're, you were saying, Carrie, that.
Oh, no, I'm already thinking about it.
Already thinking about it.
Like, you know, how much time, you need semester data, semester one, semester two, how many touch points are there, yes.
Yeah, this is good.
This is a great question.
So then you figure out where, where you can dig a little deeper and, and why, rather than just coming up with a report that's trying to capture everything.
Right, it's a specific.
And to make it even more complex, right? We're now tracking that well-being survey data by student ID number. So there's a whole lot more we can do as well, so. We're on the right track, right, Dr. Meehan?
Shouldn't just pile on more data for the sake of having more data? Again, it's not a matter of just curiosity.
It's connecting the dots, right, and connecting with the kids, for sure.
Right.
But this quarterly data is different from the annual historical data. It's more timely, more present, more actionable is the, the intent.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, just in this quarterly data, I have to say, there was something in here that was jumping out at me, like the absences, the, how, you know, right, let me get this right. I'm sure I'm looking at the right thing. You know, free and reduced price lunch absences, students with five or more absences. That's, that's like a lot of our free and reduced price kids.
So of the three hundred and eighty students with five or more absences, excused or unexcused, Pete, it was one pass, it was like two hundred and twenty-eight.
Yeah, look there, right there.
Students are eligible for free reduced price lunch. So they represent, what is that, sixty-two percent?
Yeah, but then also super interesting to me was the emergent or multilingual learners is quite a bit lower. You know, seventeen percent compared to some of our other subgroups. That's just interesting.
I guess that brings me to what I was thinking about. Pete, will you go to the discipline?
Tab.
Yeah, tab and then scroll down to, yeah, this section here. Well, first of all, amazing, I want to be, like, I want this in other spaces that I work in, and you guys are amazing. So thank you really for creating this. And what I was thinking about is that, just one was the language, since you were bringing up kind of why we use certain terms. And so the kids who are being described, who receive services, which are special ed, financial, and language, I would just say, let's add the student to also, because they're not student first, right? We have students with IP's, and then we have free and reduced price lunch.
Thank you.
We're talking about students, yeah.
Yes.
And then I was thinking also, in these numbers, I was trying to do the math, given that it is a tool for us, I was thinking about, since this is such a small number, really, which is a celebration, seven percent of our student population, but for some who don't necessarily then think, okay, well, so what is the rate within, let's say, our black population that are receiving discipline, so that's about thirteen percent, just using some old numbers, right? And then looking at all of our subgroups in that way to understand really what this means for each of our groups of students. So that could be an interesting, I don't know if it would be a bar that would add on to that, or, but somehow, because it looks like, it's hard to understand kind of the state of the union in that way.
Okay, thanks, well, we will continue to play with this and make this more helpful.
Yeah, right, it's an evolution, it's, it's amazing as it is too.
Want to go first? Okay. I, so this, I really, this is great. So, yeah, I was trying to look at it with, okay, what am I learning here, what's the data? But also not looking at it just for data's sake. And so my only comment is, one thing that jumped out at me, that I don't know if it jumped out at anybody else, is that when we look at students with five or more absences, the actual number of students who have five or more absences goes up with each grade. And I just thought that was worth noting, and might be one of the things that, you know, when we look at this, so then what, so, okay, what are we learning from this data, or what can we, you know, look into? Oh, and also a question, how, what, how would you distinguish between alternatives to suspension and restorative practice? How should I think of those?
An alternative to suspension would be an opportunity, instead of the suspension, you would be referred to a program. Typically, one of three, might be a community service program reduction, a, another alternative to, thank you, SUI, which is students who are having some, some support, who need support with, I am losing all my words.
Substance abuse.
Substance abuse, thank you. And finally, those students who can benefit from restorative practices.
So restorative practices, when you, when you talk about restorative practices, you actually mean the whole process, the formal process of restorative practices, correct?
Yeah, so we do have a restorative practice coordinator now. And those students would be, would be referred to that coordinator, who would then do an assessment as far as what, what's the treatment, per se.
Depending on the incident.
Right, right, which could be pretty intense, or like in a group setting.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for this. This is exciting, this is, this is really amazing. Thank you. Let's keep it moving. So the next item is FOIA's. Dr. Beavis, looks like we have one, two, three, four.
Yes, we have Foya from SCOTI, Wang, Citric Novae, and Melonowski, and the responses are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is board committee reports. Do we have any board committee reports that we want to hear from tonight? If not, this, this is a good place for us to talk about our experience at Summit. I think six of our board members attended the National Summit for Courageous Conversations last week. And I asked board members to come ready, to talk a little bit about that experience and how it connects with, with our work here at ETHS. So I don't necessarily have an order, who would like to go first? You want to start with you, Liz?
Sure. Um, I jotted down some notes, get everything straight. It was a great summit again this year, several transformational moments occurred during sessions and listening to speakers. In one of my sessions, it was titled, "When Education is Not Learning: Lessons from Youth." We had a Zoom call with three youth who were formerly served by the McKinney-Eventow Act because they had experienced homelessness in their K-12 schooling. They are now all college students, and we were able to have a question and answer session with them and learn about their experiences with homelessness, their schooling, and how the McKinney-Eventow Act helped them access their education and prepare them for higher education. All three of them had positive things to say about the McKinney-Eventow Act, but at the same time, they shared the difficulties of navigating school with their marginalized identities in a racist school system. I'm grateful that, to have had the opportunity to listen to them share their experiences. In another session called, "Moving Beyond Our Stories of Silence and Separation", we shared a white affinity space and discussed the harms of unhelpful conversational patterns of silence. I was reminded of something that has weighed heavily on my heart since our September board meeting a month ago. I made the mistake of not expressing my support to our superintendent in the face of increased public scrutiny of his position and person. At that board meeting, there was a discussion about how the board had witnessed an increase in emails and FOIA's pertaining to Dr. Campbell's performance contract and private personnel details. We, as a board, had never seen that line of inquiry under our previous superintendent, who was a white male. I do believe that this sudden scrutiny of our superintendent is racially motivated, and I am sorry for not saying so publicly at our last meeting. Just three percent of our superintendents nationwide are black, and as with many black professionals, they face increased scrutiny and have to prove themselves over and over again. I want to invite the public and the local media to really ponder why they didn't pursue this line of questioning under our previous white superintendent, who largely received positive media coverage or a glossing over if it was contract renewals and pay raises. And I will continue to support Dr. Campbell and the outstanding work he has done and continues to do. Something that I am aware of, and I've been keenly reminded of recently, is that raising my racial consciousness is a journey that I continue to be on and will be on for life. I am grateful to have the opportunity to learn at Courageous Conversation Summit, and grateful to be a part of the ETHS family who values this learning and who does this work to benefit all of our students. Thanks, Pat.
Thank you. All right, Leah.
Okay. I also have some notes, but I think in light of what Liz just said, I also want to acknowledge that I also did not, you know, name race and show my public support verbally for our superintendent, Dr. Campbell, which I think is incredibly important. And to recognize extra scrutiny for our superintendent, who is a black superintendent, is important to name, and it's always important to name race, so I do, I do want to say that as well. We are, I, I, I feel very fortunate that we are able to attend the Courageous Conversation Summit. I feel that, I feel like Summit is always an intense, challenging, but also a hope-filled experience, and one that involves lots of learning and self-reflection. As we set goals and approve policy as a school board, we're continuing to work hard to create a racially equitable and inclusive community in which all of our students feel valued and seen, and have their identities affirmed. An anti-racist community that elevates the assets of BIPOC students and narrows the opportunity gap between white students and students of color is what we're after. The courageous conversations that I experienced at Summit underscored the pervasive power of whiteness as a deterrent and an obstacle to the anti-racist work that we're tackling here at ETHS. I think it's important for me as an individual to continue to reflect upon how whiteness shows up in my behavior as a board member and a community member. I believe I must acknowledge that if I am not willing to name race or to interrupt biased policies or structures that negatively affect students and staff of color, then I I am supporting longstanding inequities in our school community. There's a quote from Ijoma Oluwu's 2018 book, So You Want to Talk About Race, that was highlighted in one of my sessions at Summit that particularly spoke to me. Quote, "The beauty of anti-racism is that you don't have to pretend to be free of racism to be anti-racist. Anti-racism is the commitment to fight racism wherever you find it, including in yourself." And that's the only way forward, end quote.
Thank you. Mira.
I want to talk to you guys. I felt the Summit was a new experience because we were here. And I don't think I really liked it as much, but I did learn a lot, and I felt very fortunate to be there. A few things that stood out, one was that, I think it was Dr. Dabinga, talked about the fact that we can't talk our way out of what our behaviors got us into. And I was just, like, that said so much to me, and it makes me think about all of the things that our kids are doing and learning, and how much action, and I think about the theater, and I think about even us sitting in this space, you know, we're talking a lot, but so much of what we are trying to do requires action. And so that, that was a, like, in behavior, and so I love what we're encouraging for our kids and the things that we've seen. And then there was a question that came into one of the spaces I was in, what's the technology that's required to build or construct the conditions for inclusion? For us, you know, we're talking here about excellence and equity, and I think that equity is excellence. And so what's the technology that's required? And then I wove that together with another piece that came up, which was, there was a discussion with Dr. Poon on the history of the, coining the term Asian-American, and how that was a political tool to build solidarity. And so I think even in this moment, as you both are reflecting on whether or not you spoke or not, and how we know that our voices, I, I didn't either speak that evening regarding the ways in which the interrogation of contract and different things were happening, but that, the, this is our political tool in many ways to, to help our, our students and our community be the best that they can be. And so while I didn't speak up, I want to make that clear, that I am very much always thinking about how race, both is a beautiful aspect of who we are, and then racism can play a role in destroying the things that we're trying to build, and asking that question of, what is the paper, or what are these elements trying to do along those racial lines? And when I was thinking about, and I'm going to get there, I'll land this point, what was my absence of my voice or not, or when, as you guys were speaking? And I think what I often am wondering is, how do I say this? The second guessing, the not knowing when to speak or to speak is most likely, and I think I even talked about this, also feeling tired, those are probably excuses. And so there's a fear sometimes of me, do I know enough? Can I speak out on something? Have I read enough? Do I know? And I think that's that internalized level of white supremacy that says that I have to be perfect, or I have to know everything that I'm talking about. And, and so that's, when I was thinking about those reasons, too, I think that's what was coming up for me. And, and it's not just an apology, you know, to you, Marcus, but just as us as a board, of how we want to work together, and how we want to be a unified body. And so I think that's an important piece, so I, I think that's for all of us. And so I say that to all of you. And then the last piece that came to mind, and I think it was Dr. Poon also who said this, is that she was talking about the difference between just us and justice, and this idea of individualism and collectivism, and, and that's what's, I think, also beautiful about our work here, but in the work we do with our kids, is that it's in pursuit of justice, not, you know, just us. This is just for us, she kept saying. And so, anyway, those are different pieces that I experienced and loved about Summit.
These are all great reflections. I, I want to say ditto to everything. This, this experience was really different for me. I was just coming in from attending another conference. And so I was, I was a little tired, and was just like, okay, you know, let's, let's just get going, let's go, let's do this. Knowing that I always get energized going to, to Summit, and it still, for me, it ranks as one of the top conferences I've ever attended and continue to attend, and I attend a lot. So that sets the stage, a little tired going into another one. And the first workshop I attended was facilitated by Mira, and it was Operation Red Apple, hiring who you want to become, who we want to become. Which was a, just a great experience to sit and listen, because in the previous summits, we've always presented, right? So I didn't have to present, I was like, ooh, I could just go in and sit and not worry, and not do prep work, and not do any of that, and I can listen and learn. And that was so powerful, because it, it made me think about how, when opportunities come up, as an example, you know, Liz, you all have talked about Dr. Campbell and, and the media and so forth and so on, it's not packaged perfectly, right? It's not like knocking on the door, we get ready to show up today, you know, so get ready. I mean, it, it happens, and so I often wonder, like, what do we do with all the training, all the reading, all the conference going, all the conversations we have? How does that fall out of us when it's time? Or do we just hold on to it until it's perfect? You know, to craft the special, the perfect letter, to, you know, have the private conversation, to show up, or be a part of a panel, or do we, does it click that, no, there's bias here? You know, and we have to call it out even when we're afraid. So I was just enlightened by the conversations I was having at the table in that conference, I mean, in that workshop, and then I went to another one, rebranding the student athlete, and how intentional, because that is such a passion of mine, and, you know, and, but how intentional we have to be in instilling, not just the, supporting the athleticism of our students, but the leadership development of our students in helping them see themselves currently, who they are and who they may be in the future. We don't do a good job showing them the possibilities that exist if they don't go to college as a student athlete, or, you know, whatever the case may be, right? How intentional can we be in, in producing these, these leaders? And have, helping them understand that their skills are transferable, not just on the court, or in the field, or, you know, in the pool, or what have you, but they are able to do and aspire to be anything they want to do before they decide what, which college they want to choose to play the sport or participate. So that was good, that was the first time that workshop was done. But the highlight of the moment for me, and I was so glad it came, because, like I said, I was tired, but I, I was excited by everything that Summit did, from the visuals to the guest speakers, to everything. So I happened to be in the, in the, the gift store, and this young lady came up to me, and she spoke, and she said, why are you so familiar to me? And I was like, I don't know, like, I'm not, I don't know, where are you from? And, you know, we started talking, and, and she said, oh, I'm at Waukegan, I teach there. And she said, well, where are you from? Who are you connected to? And I said, well, Evanston Township, I'm, I'm not, you know, an educator, I'm on the board. And she said, that's it. I sat in on your presentation last year, right? So here I am, like, ooh, I'm glad we don't have to do a presentation, and here is this young lady saying, I sat in you all's presentation last year, that's where I remember you from. And she said, well, I'm an educator at Waukegan. She said, but because of that presentation, I'm going to be a candidate for a school board official for Warren Township. And I, I was floored right there, I was like, what did I even come in here to buy? I didn't come in here to buy anything. I, you know, and she was, and she said, she said, I'm pulling together my campaign right now for Warren Township. And it was because of the presentation that she sat in to listen to our story and to be inspired, that she can make change in the community that she's living in. And I said, well, look, if you want help, reach out, she's already texted me like three, four times. So, I mean, I, that was it for me. It was, it was the connection, and I'm, you know, reminded by what Shayla said, got to see her, and she couldn't stay the entire conference, because she had a board meeting, and she said, you know, this is where I come to get refueled. And she said, I hate that I have to leave. And, but that experience, that connection, just made my entire process. I was like giddy from that point on, and I think I shared it with Pat, and I was like, I just met this lady, and she was at our, you know, presentation, and she remembered us, and now she's running for school board. So, yeah, Dr. Fields from Waukegan, Warren Township, she's running to be a school board official. I am so proud of her, and so inspired by the work that we do, and how people are paying attention, and we don't even know it. Right? And, and the thing is, and I say this every year, they need to see all of us, they need to hear from all of us, because this work is collective, and it's heavy, and it requires all of us, and we're not all the same, we come from different perspectives, which makes this even better, this work even more meaningful. So, yeah, that was the highlight, and that's what I'm holding on to.
Awesome. That's great. I actually have the book, in case anybody wants to, to go through it. When we didn't get it the first day, I was so like, oh, no, there's no book. So I was really glad to get it. The bag, I don't really care that much about. Yeah, Marcus has an extra bag. I, I agree, I think that, that the National Summit for Courageous Conversations about race is, is just invaluable. It's like the core, it is where we go to get refueled, and I look forward to it every year. And this year was a little different, because it was right here in Chicago, but I'm so glad that, that we went, and, and I feel great, empowered by having so many people from ETHS attend. We are, I don't know that there's another school board that attends with the numbers that we, that we go. So just about all of our school board is there, and I must have said that to people on the elevator, you know, just, you know, we have six school board members here, so that was really good. And, and then the numbers of, we had, like, what, fifteen or so staff? So numbers matter, and that shows our commitment to this work. So that was good, I went to some really good sessions. I, I tended to go to a few sessions that were about supporting leaders of color, because that was on my mind, recognizing the challenges that leaders of color have, and needing just more resources and support, and fostering just an environment where they can thrive. And I'm not just talking about Dr. Campbell, but I'm talking about myself, I'm talking about Monique, I'm talking about Mira, I'm talking about leaders of color in our miss, I'm talking about our department leaders, and, and, you know, everybody. It's, it's, it's not easy, and it's not intuitive. So just something to think about. Strategic Partnerships is another one that I went to, really, again, calling for leaders of color to, to be thinking strategically, thinking intentionally about their work. And also, this one was done by this professor from Howard, who really encouraged folks to document their experiences, their leadership experiences, because there are some similarities, and it's helpful to hear what other people are experiencing. So there's, there's support and there's help. And then I went to a session called Good Trouble. And every time I said that I'm going to a session on Good Trouble, folks laughed, I think Marcus laughed at me when I said, I'm going to a session on Good Trouble, and Marcus laughed, and he's like, yep, you should go to that. And so that one was led by a nationally recognized educator, a professor, who has a reputation for building an anti-racist school environment. That's what he does across the country. He works with leaders, and he works with school boards. And he just gave some very basic steps about how to, how to build an anti-racist school environment, and much of what he said, I feel like we do, but there's just something, there's something about hearing that we, we need to know our history and talk about our history, and share our history with each other, and those stories, we need to make sure everybody knows, this is what we did, these are the stories, committing to racial equity, committing as a, as a, as a district to talking about racial equity, and recognizing and working to eliminate the de facto segregation in our district, really looking at our, the policies that perpetuate this. And then, again, thinking strategically, you know, that connection, again. So, so all of these things are just really important. And just overall, I think that, that Summit, the Summit experience is unlike any other. It's, it is a conference, but it's just unlike any other, it's exhausting, for sure. But I, I just think the benefits of, of this Summit, and all the summits, just go way beyond what it, what we can actually talk about. It, it almost has to be experienced in order for it to be understood. So I thank you all for going, I appreciate your reports, and, and encourage you to continue to reflect on your experience at Summit.
And shout out to the jazz band.
Absolutely.
That played during the brunch for the students, awesome.
Yes, we had our, our band for the jazz brunch. Yes, that was great. It's really good to see them. Yeah. All right. Thank you. Okay, so we are at our student board report.
Okay. Hi, everyone, good evening. So just a quick report. The first quarter of school just ended last Friday, so tension was pretty high, I guess, because there were a lot of, like, I guess, midterms. But besides that, seniors are also preparing to send out their first round of, like, early applications, I think that'll be a nice weight off of our shoulders. And then, um, this pa, or last week, the flag football team, we won regionals, so, yeah. Um, okay, now, to like the student union and what we're doing. This upcoming week on Monday, October 21st, it's going to be the Student Voice Forum. So we've been preparing for that for a little while. And just a reminder, the forum provides a space for students to discuss school issues and suggest solutions for the student union to address. Then the student union is gonna kind of take all of the key ideas that we, that got brought up, and try to come up with those solutions, and come here in January to get an early start on preparing and talking to school administrators about those solutions. So this year, we're trying to gather a lot of diverse voices, and most periods are actually almost full for, for the signups, which is great. And then we're asking a leadership team to also come and just hear and show their support for all of the student voices that we're trying to get there. And then I just wanted to mention some of the key topics that we're going to include, like talking about, which is, or, so they are, student mental health and aware, and wellness, cell phone policies. cell phone policies, student and staff safety, lunch policies, school discipline, race and equity, gender inclusivity and LGBTQIA plus issues, AP courses, school cu- culture and community, student workload, or workload and more. Um, what? Yeah, those are just the main ones. But we still have a couple more, couple miscellaneous ones that, that will be brought up. And um basically, our goal with the voice forum isn't just for a place for students to vent their like problems with ETHS. It's to come up with actionable solutions that we can bring to the board and um basically try to collaborate on to make the school community better for the students, which is the goal here. Um, and seeing like administrators and leadership board, I think like would make a really big difference. It'll show that um people want to hear our voices. So we're excited to get into the next phases of the work because after the forum is when the real work starts of compiling all that data and then um bringing it here to present it. But other than that, I think the stress levels have gone down after first quarter and we're just uh still doing pretty well. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. Okay, Dr. Campbell.
All right. And thank you, Rachel. I'm always looking forward to the Student Voice Forum. Dr. Kendra, as well as many other administrators and myself will be there and it's always a highlight. It's always a highlight. Um, so I want to just pause and take a moment to recognize that today is Native and Indigenous Peoples' Day. We held Indigenous Peoples' Day here at ETHS to elevate Indigenous voices and provide students with, of all backgrounds, with a unique opportunity to learn about the culture and history of Indigenous peoples in the Great Lakes region. Through a diverse array of student interest-led programming and featured guests, students had the chance to experience the richness, richness of Indigenous traditions and express solidarity with Indigenous peoples in their ongoing struggles for equality and recognition, which is ultimately contributes to a more equitable and inclusive school community. ETHS staff and the community, uh, ETHS staff had the opportunity to listen to the guest speaker, Dr. Megan Bang, a Northwestern University professor of learning sciences and director of INU Center for Native and Indigenous Research. Dr. Bang discussed on how we can all deepen our collective understanding of Native and Indigenous history, culture, and ongoing issues, foster an informed and inclusive school environment, and inspire our staff to incorporate these perspectives into their teaching practices and engagement with students. ETHS also partnered with the Mitre Museum of Ameri- of the American Indian to host the first Indigenous Day People, Indigenous Peoples' Day powwow for the community in the Willie Mayfield House. The event just wrapped up and features speakers, performances, Indigenous artists, uh, market and information booths. A big thank you to all of our community partners who made this day so special for our students and staff. And thank you to the Indigenous ETHS Indigenous Day Planning Committee featuring Dr. Kendra, Dr. Beavis, Janay McAlpin, our Director of Equity, Nicole Parker, our History and Social Science Chair, and Rain Hannah, our Director of Communications. One last announcement, Wildkit Futures Day is next week, Tuesday, October twenty third. This is an important day for all of our students as it lists out one of our district's important strategic priorities, post-high school planning. I got rubber bands in my mouth and I'm so conscious of what I'm talking about. I'm sorry. On this day, Wildkits will contribute to their individualized career and academic plan, explore college options, and prepare for the workforce and independence after high school.
It was like a flash.
Was it? Yeah. What?
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, we were, we were looking at the flash.
And I'm like, I can't talk with these rubber bands in my mouth.
Your talking is fine.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Oh, that's it.
Okay.
That's all from my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Did you see the flash?
I did see the flash.
Okay. Yeah. Like, ooh, what's happening here?
And, and I would just say this, in lieu of our capital improvement program report, Kendra's just gonna share a couple of things and uh, because you've kind of already heard it, so we don't need a presentation.
I feel like that too. Yes. I was thinking the same thing. We've already kind of done it.
Is it at all related to the time, Pat?
Well, you know, Kendra, this is your time.
Right, this is my, this is my time. This is my time. Um, so yes, as Dr. Campbell brought up, just with the presentation that we had earlier, um, to be completely honest by the numbers, the plan that we have when you look at the uh capital improvement plan and the Arts and Innovation Wing, that Centennial Project that we're going to be doing is ninety percent of the plan, really, by the numbers, right? And so it's over ninety percent of the plan. So since we got to have an extensive presentation on that, we didn't think that um we should do an entirely different presentation because we got to cover some of the main components of the CIP presentation, which is what we accomplished uh in the previous fiscal year and what we intend to accomplish this year. Uh, just a couple of things that I will uh highlight. The capital improvement plan, as always, included um a consideration of district goals in formulating what we wanted to address. And that we know that, as I mentioned before, the capital improvement plan, wh- while we can have all of the plans, we know that we have budgetary restraints. And so we are relying heavily on the foundation in order to fund the plans that we have set out. And we are looking for the board, we're recommending that the board approve the plan for this current year. And so with that, I will open it up for questions.
Questions from the board?
Just, just a quick practical question. So it's a five-year plan. We're in year two. Do we just go through all the five years and then voila, here's an, here's the next five-year plan?
No.
It's not a ruling thing? Like, we don't, just to help me?
Yeah, so.
I know I've been here a long time and I should already know the answer to this question, but.
Yeah, so each October, we bring a plan to the board and.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so this isn't, so, so the, the deviation this year that might be throwing you off, Gretchen, is that typically, you know, it would be the CFO that is presenting the plan. And this year, we, you know, decided to have a presentation that was more robust, um, that included the architect and the CAO. So that's the slight deviation from what normally happens. Um, you, you, the board has heard from the foundation in presentations before. We've had the architect here before, but it probably was one of the first times that we kind of developed it in this way. Um, but still, we do do the capital improvement plan. Every year, it does roll forward where we talk about where the numbers actually came in. So basically saying, board, this is what you approved last year. This is what actually happened. This is what the plan is for this year. And then this is the roadmap for ahead.
So we don't, uh, so I'm sorry, I'm still slightly, slightly confused. So, but there's no, um, this, this thing goes to twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But part of the process is not adding on twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
That will happen next year.
Got it. So it like midway through our five-year plan, you then start pulling it out?
It means every once in seven years.
Ev- every year.
In other words, so did you, so when, the way we're looking at this right now is the twenty-seven, there are five years shown, but the first year is twenty-three, twenty-four.
Mm-hmm.
So it's the end of twenty-four now. I get it. And then next year, we will see twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
That's right.
At the tail end. And this twenty-three, twenty-four will drop off.
Exactly.
So we will always have a five-year plan.
So it's always five years, the first year being a look back. First year being a look back, second year being current, and then three years ahead.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm sorry for the confusion. So I guess what, it, it, so more substantively, I guess, what I would say about this five-year um plan, I get that we're only approving the money for the, you know, the immediate year. You emphasize that a lot and that's fine. Um, I, eh, with respect to our um, what do you call it? The ten-year audit of things we need to do. It's kind of like the homeowner's to-do list. Um, I, I would love to understand how that intersects with this capital improvement project. I mean, it would seem to me we cannot look at them separately. That's what I was sort of getting at earlier in probably the wrong place and at the wrong time. But um, it seems to me eh, eh, we would be remiss to keep approving a five-year plan that ignores this lengthy to-do list on other, this, every ten-year to-do list that we get from the state or the regional board. Um. So how, how do we handle that?
Yeah, so the tenure, the decennial health, yeah. The Health, Life, Safety Report that we receive from the architect um, that we basically commissioned to do this work. It has an ex- it's an extensive list of things that we need to address.
Oh, yeah. Like, a lot of, some are almost no cost, actually.
And some of them, we are able to do in-house. Some of them, we've already addressed, right? So there's some things that we are actively addressing with the um staff that we have, our engineers. We have amazing engineers um in-house that we're able to use to address some of the things. Uh, it's a part of our maintenance plan each year. Uh, we have, uh, we also have our maintenance crew uh that we use. And so, and then there are other things that when we're talking roofs, right? We're not able to use um who we have in-house to do that work. Uh, we have to.
Right, so pause there. So roof comes up on the decennial thing, different roof things.
Mm-hmm.
And then here, we have roofs.
Correct.
Are they the same, you know, like, is that lined up? So it, it's just, do you understand what I'm, it's just, I want to get my head around it. And I think we should have our heads around it just to understand. It's hard to figure out when we've got two related but unrelated documents.
Yeah, and so, so, so for example, we know that we are going to have to do roof restoration work in the arts wing.
Right.
Right, in the Arts and Innovation Wing. So we line up those needs with this project that we're planning to do. Like we said, a large part of that project is going to come from philanthropic dollars. But to be completely honest and transparent with the board, we, we did, the foundation did a lot of work in discerning what they could raise and what you can raise money for, right?
People don't want to buy us a new roof. Is that what you're saying?
That, that, okay.
I don't want to put a new roof on my own home.
Right, right, yeah.
No, I, you, come on, don't dance around it. We all get it.
Yeah, if you, yeah, if you're choosing between renovating your kitchen or your roof, everybody's doing the kitchen. And so um, it's similarly, we may be able to find a donor that would, you know, gratefully support us in having a new culinary lab. But it's not the same when we're looking for the funds for tuck pointing. And so that's the challenge that we face when we know.
No, I get it. And I'm really, I'm, I'm not even, I completely get that. That's not even my concern. I'm just, as a logistical overarching.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just, maybe there's a way we can communicate this. I'm gonna vote yes on the capital improvement project. It's a late hour, we can get out of here.
No, I, but what I think you're doing, you're looking at all the lists.
All of the lists.
And you're trying to figure out how to deal with it in-house where it's zero cost.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what will take time over five-plus years and it lands on this list? Um, or what can you package, right, with fundraising? That someone will say, yep, well, I can't do that without making sure that the kids don't get water dripped on them, right? So then, so you package that. So it's, it's not, um, I mean, so internally, I think, Gret- Gretchen, the, all the things, all the systems, all the, the capital projects have to be looked at and then they determine where they fall. So it's not a, a duplication of spending. You're not saying, you know, I want to do this and do that.
Never even suggested that, yeah.
No, but I, but, but you've talked about it not crossing over or us um repairing other things that have once been taken care of.
Communicating both to the board and everybody else.
Mm-hmm.
What this is. And, you know, it's much like we have a district dashboard that's added a lot of clarity to how we're understanding student-related data. And I, don't worry, I'm not asking for a dashboard on all this stuff. But, but I kind of am asking for a way to get our heads around the relationship between these long lists of numbers and, and home repairs that we need to do with our building.
Yeah.
And uh, that's what I'm looking for. It's not, I don't, you know, I know you're doing all the right things. I know we're prioritizing. I know we're, I, I, I know all that. It's, it's, I, what I'm looking for is a way to better understand, present. And then also, well, when we look at these two things, the CIP and the decennial thing together, like, it's almost like we need this overlay. Things will become clear and it will be easier to understand what the real priorities are.
Yeah, and I, it's, that's all. I, I want to just say that out loud because asking those questions in isolation of understanding that all this gets looked at can be left out there to.
And people might get confused. Even though you, you may not be saying that, folks can get confused.
And I, back to your point, Gretchen, I do want to be clear that, you know, I mentioned before that there will be a portion of this large project that will be paid for with the um, the debt service fund, correct? Um, that we're issuing debt in order to handle different, a variety of things around the building. But I also want to be clear, not a hundred percent of what we issued in debt will go towards this project. We recognize that there are still things that need to be addressed in this building that live outside of the Arts and Innovation Wing. And we are still committed to the upkeep of our building. And so, you know, it can be seen even on the plan when you look at like electrical switches, absorption chilers, hot water systems. All of those things are things that are, we saw cited in our Health, Life, Safety Plan and that we intend, we know we're doing.
We will do.
Yeah.
You want it to be clear that we're doing it.
And, and I, and I think that's why I want to point to the example, yeah.
Yeah.
We have to say it out loud.
Yeah.
And we should say it out loud. And that's what we're doing.
That's right. Yeah.
Unless anybody has any other questions.
Okay, no questions? Then I'm gonna move to the items for action. And the first item, believe it or not, is approval for capital improvement program.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the next item is approval of amended new courses, course changes, and course deletion proposals.
Can I make a, just a statement about why we had to reduce some class offerings? So we're scaling back offerings for new courses that we discussed last time, a few of them. Uh, we're temporarily pausing History of Asian Chicago, Fashion Merchandising, and Middle East and North African History. Plan to revisit those courses next school year for adoption. I do want to emphasize, though, the significance of the Middle East, North Africa history course. The subject matter is increasingly relevant, as we've seen. Um, and we believe that its potential to significantly enhance our understanding of the region. That's consistent with the, with the previous discussion. But to ensure that this course is developed with the necessary care and sensitivity, we need to invest additional time in planning and collaborating with a wide range of stakeholders, including partners in higher education to make sense, in a sense-making exercise, to make this make sense. Not just at the university grad level, but for students at the high school level to make that, to bridge that developmentally um appropriate uh pedagogy. So that'll allow us to create a course ultimately that accurately reflects the complexity of the region and respects the experiences of its people and also is appropriate for a high school audience. So a lot of work is going to have to go into this course. And we simply, work's been done, but there's a lot of work to do. Uh, and then the other two courses are being paused. There's some financial concerns around um adding a merchandising course. And then there's also some around um the History of Asian Chicago and expenses and things. We'll figure it all out, but we're gonna pause and we're gonna bring them back.
Okay.
That's it. You all can talk and vote now. Sorry, it's late.
It's all right. All right, thank you for that clarification. All right, can I have a motion, please?
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Livingston?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ekar?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Okay, next item is approval of press policy issues 115 and 116 and district revisions.
Can I make two just statements, just briefly? Just wanted to draw the board's attention. We did consult the attorney on, on two policies, 2260 and 510. Attorney was fine, said yes. Specific question was actually asked around 2260, can we use or designate? Attorney said absolutely. And then 880, the gift to the district, the attorney reviewed it and rewrote it to make clear demarcations between the ETHS School Board and the foundation. So thank you for that, and that's in your, that's reflected in the revisions in your, in your.
Thank you, I saw that.
Thank you. Okay, motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ekar?
Yes.
Rowland?
Sandy?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes. Okay, next item is consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from September 16th, 2024, both the regular meeting and closed session meeting, approval of bills, and personnel report.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ekar?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and we're at old and new business. Is there old, anybody, old and new business? We've talked about it all. Polling of the board, I know that we talked about the powwow, but I also want to lift up Yamo. I went to Yamo and it was amazing. It was really good. So I think a few other people might have gotten there. So I just thought it was such a good performance. Anything else? If not, can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned at 10:41 PM.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Oh.